Right, okay. And welcome to the Regular City Council Meeting for November the 3rd, 2025. And I would ask at this time that we do the roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here, thank you. And thank you, we have today Bradley Buck of the Bridge to Life Assembly of God Church. Would you all please rise?
Thank you, Mayor. God in heaven, I praise you for your greatness and recognize that you are King of the universe and we owe our lives to you. Thank you for being involved in every one of our lives. And I ask you tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus that you would oversee this meeting, that you would guide the thoughts and the discussion, that you would have your way because your ways are good and wise beyond our understanding. May you be honored in all that's said and done here tonight. Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a few people that would like to address council. And believe it or not, the first one on the list is a Mike Starica. Is there a Mike Starica here? Oh, there you are.
Yes, sir, I'd like to hold comment until light of nine E.
You, really? Okay. All right, Rob. Come on up, Rob. Rob Gilkerson, and it's CMBH proposal?
Correct.
I'm not sure what that is.
That's your proposal for leasing of the Royal Gorge Park.
Oh, okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Just talked to your county clerk, or not city clerk, sorry. He says that won't, the actual contract won't be released to the public until tomorrow. So therefore, yes, my only comments tonight is how many of you have been here long enough to appreciate or take advantage of when the Royal Gorges used to give free days out to citizens of Canyon City?
You know, I've been here 51 years, so I think probably I was here then too. They were still digging the gorge when I was here.
They were still.
I'm sorry, just kidding. I think I remember that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Really? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we did ask them, you had emailed me last year about it, and we asked them, and I think February 11th of last year, they did a Fremont Free Day. But it was kind of last minute and not super well advertised, but it certainly was ensuring that there was more access for locals to get to the bridge more often and more affordably was in our RFP, was in our request for proposals, and is something that we are certainly very interested in ensuring as part of the new bridge contract. So that it's not that one-off. It is something that is more regular and people can plan on it and really take ownership and pride in it being their bridge.
Sure, I looked at the RF, and it's like a plan for community engagement, including continuation of discounted season passes, free days, or other programs to enable access of local city residents. So really learned to see that tradition of free days come back. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Could I just say one other thing?
Yes, go right ahead.
You know I can't pass up any opportunity to plug our public library.
Or to ask questions.
Or to ask questions.
Go ahead.
But the public library does have a pass. It's a family pass that you can reserve to go to the bridge for free. And the bridge has worked with them over the past couple of months to make sure that people can actually reserve the specific day that they want to go up there. So it's not as ideal as a Fremont Free Day, but it is another avenue for right now folks getting up there during their current contract period.
And how many parking tickets do they have to?
So it's only one pass. It was purchased by the Library Foundation, but it's a family pass, so you can get up to four people and on it.
Okay. I did some research, or tried to do some research at the center, and it was kind of vague. It sounded like it probably started in the 60s and maybe ended up in about 2000, fizzled out, but I'm not sure dates, just wasn't able to get much. I know it was at least a 20-year tradition, so, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. That's it, all I have. At this time, then, any council members wish to make any announcements or board updates? All quiet. Well, then I have to make an announcement that sometimes, you know, we have friends and employees that age, and they have a birthday. Now, one of the, one of the, one of the birthday people is here. Is the chief here? Oh. Would you want us to sing happy birthday to you, or would you?
No, no, happy birthday.
Is that appropriate? I mean, I was, I thought all these officers came in, you finally got my warrant.
They're your first ever, Ben.
Okay. But happy birthday, Chief John Schick. So are you pushing 40? Somewhere. Yes.
Yes, I do have an announcement.
Oh, go ahead, Andrea, thank you.
And this is, I got a call from a teacher today who teaches at the high school, and she wanted to remain anonymous, but she said she is aware of some children, some students in the classes who are experiencing hunger, and their families are having issues of trying to come up with money for the rent and food because they're not getting their assistance, the SNAP assistance. So I've given Mr. Stevens some information that we're gonna post on our website. So all the different food pantries that we have in town, because, and not just for the holiday, they really need your help right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Amy, did you have a question?
Not a question, just a statement. Just a reminder that election day is tomorrow, so make sure that your voice is heard. Get your vote in before 7:00 PM down at the county building. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? We have general government meeting Wednesday, urban development renewal, renewal at 5:00, and then the regular city, general government meeting will be here, and that's covering water and stormwater rates.
Yes, sir.
So, might be interesting. Okay. Let's go on then to the consent agenda. I'd ask the city administrator to review that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October 20th, the special meetings on October 15th and 23rd, which was the community agency funding, October 20th, which was an executive session, October 22nd, which is the budget hearing, and October 27th, the city-city-county meeting. 7B authorizes the mayor to appoint Colleen Rudolph to the Public Art Committee. 7C is to award bid 14-25 for one Kawasaki Mule, 4010 Trans 4x4 UTV to Logistics 365 Inc. of Norfolk, Nebraska, in an amount not to exceed $16,989. 7D awards bid 71-25 Ninth Street Reconstruction Meadows to Washington to roads construction in an amount not to exceed $2,569,888.79. 7E accepts and files the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Audit Report. And 7F is to receive and file cash dispersments.
Any questions of council?
Before we take any questions, can I just, with the audio, I'm getting a few texts that saying they're not receiving anything on. Okay, thank you.
Amy, did you have a question?
Yes, I was wondering, there are two items on the consent agenda that I think are particularly important, so I'd appreciate it if we could have a brief staff report on them so that folks know what to expect. I know the North Ninth Street reconstruction has been an issue of concern for many in our community for many years, and it's incredibly exciting that we're talking about awarding it this evening, but I think it would be worthwhile to hear kind of what's the expected timeline for the project, how can folks learn more about it if it's going to impact them. And I know the city, particularly the director of Public Works, Leo Evans, has been coordinating closely with Canyon Exploratory School, so just to give folks a sense of what's going to come. Thanks.
And we have our Public Works Director, Leo Evans, at the podium. Leo, do you wanna?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. Yeah, this is a great project for the city. We're really excited to get this going. This project is expected to be about a six-month duration project, so if it's awarded tonight, it takes us about two weeks to get the insurance and bonds and all those things in place. We would hope to start work around Thanksgiving and then wrap up usually in probably around late May or June, so it will impact much of the school year. We've met with Canyon Exploratory School and their principal a couple times to coordinate with them on best access, best traffic control, things of that nature. Majority of the project will be built similar to Justice Center where we will maintain one direction of traffic throughout the project. You'll be able to go southbound on Ninth Street most of the time. Northbound will be detoured west over to Fifth Street, that was paved last year, so kind of paved in anticipation of this project. There will be some work that requires full closure. We're gonna be installing some storm sewer down the center of the road to provide drainage that's right now covered by an open ditch, and that will require full closure. We're gonna try to coordinate as much of that as we can during the off-school times of Christmas break and Thanksgiving. I don't know that we'll get it all done in those windows, but to the extent we can, we're gonna try to take advantage of those, so. As I said, it's a good project. We're really looking forward to getting it underway and hope to see it done here in June. And the other section of Ninth Street from Mystic to Meadows is out for bids right now. That was issued for bids last week. Bids are due the first week of December, and that will likely be on your council agenda for the second meeting in December to recommend an award for that project, so they'll both be kind of going concurrently.
Mike, Mike, does that answer your question, or do you have a question? Think so? Okay. Mike had a question on the thing, so I think we answered that.
Perfect.
Any other questions of Leo?
Could you remind us, if folks want the kind of day-to-day or week-to-week updates on what's going to happen and what the red closures look like, how do they sign up for that?
Absolutely. We'll have to repost it again. We had posted a QR code signup for an email link we'll try to send out weekly or every other week, updates on both the Ninth Street projects to keep people up to date with how the progress is going, you know, when traffic changes may happen. That's available on our social media. Like I said, it was posted last week and made public and available, and I'm sure we'll get that posted out again for people to sign up that may have missed it the first time around.
Thanks.
I had shown a customer some property up North Ninth Street, and the daughter was in the backseat of my vehicle, and we got down to the stoplight at Ninth Street, the little girl goes, "Whee, that was fun." Driving over Ninth Street, so, because I was swerving for, I shouldn't say swerve, I'm sorry, but we were swerving around sewer grates and everything else, so.
A few obstacles right now, for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, Leo. Okay. Amy?
Thanks. The other thing I just wanted to recognize on the consent agenda is the comprehensive financial report. This is a really important piece of financial transparency for the city, and I know our finance department spends quite a lot of time on it, so I also just think it would be worthwhile to spend a minute hearing about that process and what that means and what the findings were.
Tammy?
Yeah, we've got our finance director, Tammy Nordike, and our auditor, Dimitri Chernak, online. Tammy, do you wanna talk about the?
Actually, I'll turn it over to Dimitri to give the report to council, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you, Tammy. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us be the auditors for the city once again. I will share my screen and kind of go over our results of the audit and kind of the audit opinion, if you don't mind. It won't take very long.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Can you, Tammy, give me one second here.
Okay.
One second.
We could sing happy birthday to the chief while we were waiting.
Can you guys hear me now?
I'm not gonna let it go.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, wonderful. Okay, can you, you see my screen, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you again. I just wanted to thank you, thank the mayor and the council for having us be the auditors, are affirmed to be the auditors for the, for the city once again. So here's kind of what, what we provide, is we do an audit, an annual comprehensive audit, and then we, we issue what's called an independent auditors' report for the city annually. So really, what I want to go over is the main thing, what I kind of went over last year with, with, with you all, is that kind of the responsibilities and the procedures we performed, and then as well as share the results of the audit. So our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements of the city as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. And we issue an auditors' report that includes our opinions. And essentially what this means is that we obtain reasonable assurance, and the key there is reasonable, right? We don't look at everything, we don't look at every, every line item, we don't look at every dollar amount, every dollar. We look at things that are, what we, what we consider material, which is, which is also known as significant. And that's.
You're breaking up.
That's really our objective, is to, is to focus on those, I'm sorry?
You were breaking up there.
You hear me? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Essentially, our goal is to make sure we cover significant items in the financial statements, what we consider material, and that's really our goal. I apologize if my connections messed up, I'm in a hotel room, so there might be some issues with the Wi-Fi. We perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as the government auditing standards, which are also known as Yellow Book. And really, Yellow Book is kind of a more restrictive guidance that we, as auditors, have to follow, because the city receives more than $750,000 in federal grants and federal expenditures per year, and therefore we have to perform what's called a compliance audit in addition to a financial audit. And so that's why these additional standards are required to be part of the, to be part of the, part of our audit. We exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism through, so the city council hires us, mayor and city council hire us as independent auditors to audit management, and we are independent of management, independent of the city, so we provide unbiased, most unbiased opinion. We identify and assess risk of material misstatement of the financial statements, and really what that means is when we perform procedures on the financial statements of the city, we determine based on risk, where we see the higher risk of, of error occurs, and that's where we focus our efforts. And so with that, we, in order to determine that risk, we have to obtain an understanding of internal control and the design of procedures, of processes at the city. And so we review things like, you know, cash dispersments, payroll dispersments, we look at different cash-in, cash-out things, focus on financially related processes to identify issues or areas of risk that we need to focus on. Is my connection still good?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, Tammy. And so we, the other thing we do is we, we evaluate appropriateness of accounting policies, and so we look at the city's accounting policies, we determine if, if they're, if the financially, financial policies and accounting policies are in compliance with, as intended by the mayor and the city council. And so we, we continue to, we just evaluate that to make sure everything's being followed, especially those that are significant in nature. The other thing we look at is significant accounting estimates, and so not every number in the financial statements in the annual comprehensive financial report is an actual number that can be tied to like a bank statement or an invoice. Some of the, some of the numbers are estimates, and they're allowed by, by GASP, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that sets the rules and guidance on how the financial statements are reported. And so, because not every number can be, you know, based on an invoice or some, some concrete backup, we have to do some estimates, like the FBPA liability for the pension plan for the police officers, that is an estimate that we determine based on a GASP that's required. And so we use that guidance to sort of determine the estimate that it's reasonable. And so that's part of what we perform. And so with that being said, once again, the city has what's called an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. We believe the financial statements are presented fairly, and so we, it's the highest level of, of, of opinion that you can get, it's the cleanest opinion that you can possibly obtain. And so the financial statements themselves are clean once again, and we are, we are happy to say they're, we have a clean and unmodified opinion. With that being said also, in the past, in last year, we had, we had, we had a finding that we, that was cleared. And so I just want to say that, you know, your, your finance department has done a wonderful job of cleaning up the finding that was there the year before related to financial, material financial corrections. There was, there was no need for any additional findings this year. We did not have any additional findings, and the prior, prior year finding was cleared by management, and we are happy to report that there was no significant issues to report to you this year. And with, you know, I know Tammy worked, and her team worked really hard with the new system conversion, which, you know, which caused additional time and effort to be put in by, by her team, so we appreciate all the hard work they put in. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of council? No, thank you, thank you for that. It's a, it's a pleasure to get that again, Tammy. Thank you, and thank you for your report.
Yes, thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, any questions of Tammy? Wow, it's a quiet bunch tonight, huh?
Not just a thank you, but congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. It's great.
Yeah, we're happy that audit's done, and we can just focus on budget for now, and then start audit again.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Now I forgot where I'm at. Well, consent agenda. Any questions on that of the administrator? If none, I'd ask for a motion and a second. Who'd like to make that?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, and agenda is written.
Amy?
Second.
Second, Andrea, thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you all. Let's move on to nine, it's a discussion, it's awarding bid 53-28. Oh, you know, this is the, I've done this, I didn't do it on purpose, Ryan, I really didn't. Could we have the administrators' report? We've waited for this all for two weeks now.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As much as the chief likes having happy birthday sung to him, our city clerk, I'd like to congratulate her and recognize her for receiving the CMCA Award for Contributions to the Clerk Association. Cindy does a great job doing work for this city, but it was very evident attending that annual meeting how much work she does for the Clerk's Association as well. So thank you very much, Cindy, for all of your hard work and dedication and everything that you do. Other items from the administrators' report, we've started work on the Western Gateway Master Plan. The consultants were out here a week or two ago, meeting with various stakeholders. We will be having, the consultants will be coming back that first week in December. On December 2nd, they are planning on meeting with the public and getting public feedback on the, on the site, and really starting that process with, you know, as far as public engagement goes, and that's, that project will continue well into next year. And then as Councilmember Schmisher mentioned, tomorrow is election day, so please go out and vote, make your voice heard. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Ryan? You'll have to excuse me, Ryan, it was a long day today.
That's all right.
Anyway, okay, come on. Come on, let's go on to number nine, discussion, now we can do that. Award, that is the award bid 53-25 to CMBH Partners, pending contract negotiations. I would now ask the administrator to, as Staff report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is to award the Royal Gorge lease, the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park lease to CMBH Partners. We put this out on BidNet, and we had four different bidders submit bids on this. We took three to interviews, we narrowed that down to two finalists, and CMBH was the finalist that we decided to go with. The partners at CMBH are not strangers to the bridge, they have worked for the current operator in the past and know the bridge very well, and we think that they would be a good partner moving forward and to contract with. So this bid is to award the bid to CMBH Partners, and we will start the negotiations after the bid has been awarded.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions of Ryan? None?
And that contract will come back to city council for final approval.
Okay, then I would ask for a motion and a second, and to refer this ordinance to committee. Would you like to make a motion? No? You say call for a motion.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be to refer to committee, that was my mess-up, sorry.
So we're not referring it to committee?
No, we're just voting out.
Okay, let's have a motion then. Wait.
They all say that all the way down, sir.
We're falling apart here, so. Ask for a motion and a second, so. Pending award bid 53-25 to CMBH Partners, pending contract negotiations. Would someone like to make that motion?
I so move.
Thank you, Andrea.
Second.
Second, Kathy, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's go on to 9B, which is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 13, Series 2025, entitled, Establishing the South Rim Trails Committee, and I would invite our administrator to comment.
Resolution 13 will create the South Rim Trails Committee, similar to what we did earlier this year, or late last year regarding Red Canyon Park Trails Committee, which was disbanded a meeting or so ago. This resolution will establish a brand-new committee for the South Rim Trails, and we do have a makeup of seven members, including two council members, members of the public, as well as a youth member for, for the committee.
Any questions of Ryan? Amy?
Thanks, I just have one request. I think there are a couple of little things that the folks who are avid trail users would like to explore on the north rim as well, particularly just some connections that would make the Royal Loop, once it's completed, that much better. So if, if city staff doesn't have any objections or concerns, my request would be that we establish the Royal Gorge Mountain Park Trails Committee, and amend the title to call it that, and also amend number one to say hereby establishes the Royal Gorge Mountain Park Trails Committee. I think that essentially will more clearly mirror the Red Canyon Park, it will enable us to look at the mountain park as a whole, and if there are, as I mentioned, just minor cleanups that need to be done, not on the south rim, it won't require establishing yet another committee to move that forward.
No concerns from staff?
Okay, would that then be added? The heading would be added in a new resolution, but we can vote on this tonight. Okay.
I would just, I can, happy to make the motion when folks are ready.
I was gonna say, you should probably make the motion.
With that amendment in it.
Go ahead, make the motion. Who made it?
Amy's going to, isn't she?
Amy's going to make the motion.
I'm happy to, I just don't want to cut off conversation if other people. I'm happy to, I just don't want to cut off conversation if other people.
I'm happy you're happy. Would you make the motion?
I would be delighted to. Mayor Troutman, I move that we approve Resolution thirteen, series of twenty-two-five, with the following amendments. A change in the title to read "Establishing the Royal Gorge Mountain Park Trails Committee", and changing number one to read "The City of Canyon City hereby establishes the Royal Gorge Mountain Park Trails Committee."
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Jerry, thank you. Any discussions on that motion?
I do have a question on that. Does that require three C to be amended some way also?
It doesn't. We envision that the majority of the committee's work would focus on the south rim, so prioritizing features on the south rim is still appropriate. Thank you for catching that, though, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Hearing no questions on that, would you call a motion, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
I meant call the roll. Did you? You understood? Okay, it was a long day. It's not over yet either. All right, let's go on to C, introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution seventeen, series twenty-two-five, entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado Approving a Sabbatical Program for the Canyon City Police Department." Invite the administrator or our chief of police to review that.
I will ask Chief Schick to come up and present the item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. We'd like to entertain a resolution from council to implement a Sabbatical Leave Program. It's long been recognized in the field of mental health, and not just anecdotally, that law enforcement personnel experience negative health effects on their police officers. Studies suggest one in every seven police officers actively engaged in their duties suffer from post-traumatic stress syndrome, stress disorder. That equates to about eight Canyon City police officers actively on our team right now. One in every ten struggle from mental illness, and police personnel have approximately twice the prevalence of PTSD and depression, and often associate a lower quality of life. Officers are subjected to extraordinary circumstances that members of the general public, God thankfully, they don't have to be experienced. Officers see the worst in humanity daily. No one calls the police when things are going well. It may come in the form of a particularly traumatic experience, such as a gruesome accident or homicide, a vicious crime against a child, close personal brush with death, the death or serious injury of a partner, God forbid, the shooting of a perpetrator or innocent civilian, or an especially grisly large-scale crime scene. As such, police officers are often in situations where life-changing decisions have to be made, in a rapidly evolving situation. Now, while we cannot control the calls for service, our organizations can control the type of mitigating factors that we have in place, internal factors that influence the outcome on the back end. These preventative services can offer mitigating effects, programs such as our peer support team, our peer support canine, our Sigma Tactical Wellness that we are getting ready to experience in the coming weeks, to measure the physical outcomes of vicarious and cumulative stress and trauma. And should council find it in their hearts to pass this resolution, the Sabbatical Leave Program. We are constantly placing things in our toolbox to mitigate these factors. Invest in our team. I believe the more we invest in our team, the greater our outcomes are to our community. Everybody wins. This program is innovative, it's very new. It has an opportunity to extend the life of our officers. There are studies within your package that outline that most officers, after serving a twenty-five, thirty-year career, only live eight years after they leave the job. There's a number of factors that we can point to, from mental wellness to the physical factors that are also associated with the stress and trauma of our job. The Sabbatical Program, as I said, is innovative. It will allow us, at their tenured mark, five years on the job, for them to put in for a thirty-day leave. This leave is scheduled outside of any of their other leave benefits. It's not PTO, it's not Family Medical Leave Act, it's not Fair Labor Standards Act. It is above and aside those items, and it's not part of our short-term or long-term disability. The idea behind the Sabbatical Leave Program is to help our officers get away from the job for an extended amount of time. As part of the policy, which is also within your package, it dictates that this time is about healing, it's about renewing, recharging their batteries, stepping away from the chaos associated with this profession. For that time, we encourage them, we don't demand or mandate how they spend their time, but we strongly encourage them to focus on faith, family, friends, positive reinvestments, those types of things. Before they go on their Sabbatical Leave, we will have them host a session with a clinical psychologist, who also happens to be our peer support team coordinator, so that she can help them understand what healthy pursuits look like in terms of their Sabbatical Leave. Again, going back to the Sabbatical, once it is approved, and they have their pre-meeting with the psychologist, and they take the leave, we will make arrangements with every organization associated with our organization, for example, the District Attorney's Office, the courts, everybody, they will be disconnected entirely. So, we will have to schedule those things out ahead of time. After their Sabbatical time, they'll come back. We will have them complete an efficacy report. As been recommended, we will look to probably offer the first report to council after the first year. In that first year, we will probably have about twenty, twenty-one officers eligible. So, we should have some pretty good data, quantitative and qualitative, to inform council what the benefits look like and felt like for our officers. Outside of that, once they come back, they will be eligible, again, because we're looking at focused on reduction of cumulative and vicarious trauma, vicarious and cumulative trauma and stress. So, the longer you're in the job, the higher these numbers get. So, the purpose and spirit behind the Sabbatical Program is to then, every three years outside of that window, offer them another Sabbatical opportunity, again, to renew, recharge, restore their faith, their family, their friends, all of the things that they typically do not have time and an opportunity to invest in during the job itself. I know that I provided you with a memo, I provided you with the policies, provided you with a sample of what we're looking at in terms of the efficacy study. I would ask that you entertain this and allow us to make this pursuit, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Schick, very much. Any questions from council? Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, so this is, this policy is intended to cover sworn officers?
Yes, sir.
And that would include yourself?
Yes, sir.
The, I would suggest that you have, in the policies, you're given a lot of authority to essentially be the valve, the yes-or-no person on a lot of stuff. I would suggest that you add some wording in there, that you can move up that responsibility to the city administrator, that if it's something that you would need to take advantage of, that you would have another level of review to do that.
We could certainly do that, absolutely.
I think that would be appropriate. I mean, because right now, you're the one that says yes or no, and so, if the police chief needed to take advantage of this, I think there needs to be some mechanism in there where that can happen through another set of eyes.
Some oversight, that's completely reasonable.
Amy?
Thanks. I want to commend you for your innovation and creativity in prioritizing the mental health and well-being of our officers, obviously supporting those who serve our community, and ensuring that they are both physically and mentally healthy is paramount to not only their success, but also to the safety of our community. And I really appreciate the effort that you've put in to come up with a plan to measure the efficacy of the program as well, so that we can know whether or not it is serving the sworn officers as intended. I think that accountability and evaluation will be key to the success of the program, because it is a, well, it's not necessarily a financial commitment, it is a big commitment of staff resources.
Absolutely.
So, I would propose that we add a number two to the resolution that says that the program will be reviewed by City Council in January twenty-twenty-seven. That gives Chief the year to collect that data, and then would enable us to make sure that it comes back to council, and council can ascertain, is this working, is this not, are any tweaks needed to kind of put it on firm footing for a long lifespan?
Couldn't agree more, yes, ma'am.
Ryan?
It sounds like we have a couple of changes. Attorney Sellers has also flagged for me that the version that is in the packet is not the one with the attorney corrections in it. So, it sounds like we may need to table this to the next meeting, so we can bring back the correct version and make those additional changes.
And the only thing I'm going to say is, and I like you having that, but I don't know if one year's enough, because, you know, I don't know if there's going to be enough people taking that leave. I'd say we go for two years, and then let the chief of, you know, get an evaluation. I think one year is just so quick after the fastest, you don't even know how many are going to take the leave.
I think that's a completely fair point, councilman. In fairness to Councilwoman Schmisher, that number in that second year will only change from twenty to twenty-three.
Okay. Okay.
I appreciate the consideration, but I don't know that it'll tell us much more than the first year.
Okay, then I'm good with that first year.
Okay. So, we'll then schedule this back? Is that what we wanted to do? Schedule it for the next?
Yes, we would recommend tabling it to the second meeting in November.
Do we need a motion?
That would probably be the best, yes.
Okay. Well, I would like to commend you, Chief Schick. I think that this is a, I read it, we've had that for some time, I think it's great. We've worked, and you have worked, and Ryan, we all worked very hard.
Yes, sir.
To get a full complement of officers for our town, and it's worked, and I think this is a tool that is very good, and I commend you again for that.
Well, I commend council for entertaining it and working with us on this. It is all about their wellness.
Yep.
But again, in terms of the investment, I think it says something about our city in terms of recruitment and retention of our officers. When they know that you care, they care.
Yeah, no, and we care. Okay, then I will need a second to bring this back to the next city council meeting. Is that a second, a first, a motion? I'm not doing real good. Go right, yes, get me off the hook.
That we table this until the second meeting in November, is that correct? Second meeting of November seventeenth?
Second. Second, made, second. Any comments? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you again. Great idea. Okay. Let's move on to D, correct? This is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance fifteen, series twenty-two-five, entitled, "In ordinance of the City of Canyon City, amending chapter seventeen point zero-six of the Canyon City Municipal Code Regarding Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and opting out of any further requirements in accordance with House Bill twenty-four dash one-one-seven-three." I would ask the administrator to review that, please.
Thank you. This is a second reading. We have not received any public comments since the public hearing, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Any questions of Ryan? And only, did you have any further questions? I saw you had a few. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on this. I appreciate staff's response to my email earlier today, just wondering where the Canyon City area stood in terms of the installation of EV chargers. We do have some around, which is great. I understand that there might be concerns about, and I don't know about all of the chargers, but the chargers that are in the city lot that's along Royal Gorge Boulevard, behind the Bean Peddler and that four-hundred block of Main, I do think that there are concerns about those chargers. I don't know enough about how they compare to the others, but I think the cost is pretty high, based on watching my son charge his EV there some weeks ago. And also, I'll note that those four chargers in that lot, I don't know if it's an issue for drivers or not, but those four chargers are shared chargers, which, as I understand, it means if more than one of those chargers is being used at the same time, they're not fast chargers, they take longer. So, I just think it's worth the city taking a closer look at, and maybe projecting out what we think the needs might be over time, since Colorado really is leading the nation in sales and leasing of EVs. And I'll just make a similar comment to what I've made during the past three and a half years about RVs, recreational vehicles that go through town. We're on a major US highway. If recreational vehicles, or if electric vehicles, cannot find a place to park, in the case of RVs, or to charge, in the case of EVs, they'll drive on through. So, I do think it's in the interest of the city over the next few years to really take a look at both of these issues. RV parking, and in the case of this ordinance, of course, do we have adequate charging, and are we making sure that the customers are not being gouged? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
Thanks. City Administrator Stevens, who sets the prices and who controls the EV chargers in the Peabody Parking Lot, the lot between Royal Gorge and Main Street on the four-hundred block?
That's ChargePoint. ChargePoint.
So, that's a private company?
That's correct.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just add my comment also, that if electric vehicle owners want different charging stations, they need to pay more. This is not a function of government, this is a function of free enterprise, and I would be totally opposed to the city engaging in a charger installation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Emily, go ahead.
Just a brief response to that. I don't know about now, but there has been in the last few years quite a lot of state and federal grant money available. I'm not saying that the city should budget for this at all, but there is grant money out there to sort of improve the network of chargers, to make sure that we really do have access for people driving EVs. And again, you know, I think our personal interest is, personal from the city's point of view, that we want people to stop in Canyon City. When my son and I charged his car behind the Bean Peddler, we went to the Bean Peddler and had lunch, because it took forty-some minutes, or whatever it was, to charge the car, I think a little over. But it's just something that I think we need to pay attention to the traveling public, and see what grants may still be available, whether it's state or federal, and take advantage of those, so that we build up the infrastructure in our community, and not just let people drive on to a different community and stop there to eat and recreate. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to briefly respond to that. We can end up going back and forth here, but it is, if we're going to pick winners and losers in the transportation industry... but it is, if we're going to pick winners and losers in the transportation industry, let's subsidize our gas stations. We'll get a lot of people stopping here then. There's no reason for a city government to be picking a winner or loser in a mode of transportation. Thank you.
I'm not suggesting that at all, so I just want to be clear about my own comments. I'm not suggesting that the city pick winners and losers. Just that we have the infrastructure, just like we're building infrastructure from fiber optic to the home. We want to have infrastructure for the traveling public.
That is not the view of the council. You mean you, not we, you.
Okay, let's tone it down.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yeah. All right. Any other questions, Ryan? Then I would ask for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, John?
I move that we approve Ordinance 15, Series 2025, on second reading.
A second?
A second.
Jerry, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hemmerich?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to E. This is a second reading and adoption by Title Only of Ordinance 17, Series 2025, entitled in ordinance of the City of Canyon City, amending Title III of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning the Imposition of a Surcharge on Amusement Rides, Attractions, and Recreational Excursions on Land Owned by the City. And we have a report from staff or from Ryan?
Yes, sir. Again, this is a second read. Ordinance 17 applies that 2.25% surcharge on ticket sales, fares, and fees for amusement or scenic rides, attractions, and recreational excursions in the city's mountain parks, including the Royal Gorge Park, and acts as the companion ordinance to Ordinance 14, the excise tax ordinance. It mirrors the language and also has a provision in it to make sure that the surcharge and the excise tax are not double-charged to the end user. And staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Any questions? Did Mike have a question? Do you have a question, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I emailed all of you last week on a proposal that would change the section on where the money is to be divvied up. I stand here with my ballot that I haven't voted yet. I've thought over my decision on whether to vote for 2B or vote against it, and in reading social media posts and what I've seen and heard and experienced from the REC district, think a change needs to be made. The REC district has proven for the last 10 to 15 years that they've known the pool is failing and did nothing to save money to repair it or to replace it. And then there's been other comments on social media about the city getting a slush fund to do whatever they want to. So my proposal that y'all received was to take 50% of the overage, over and above what that tax would pay for the operation of the new pool, set it into a special account controlled by an independent financial advisor, and hold that money only for major repairs or future replacement of the pool. The remaining 50% would be overseen by a board of seven people. I've outlined the makeup of that. That's debatable on those members. But to receive grant applications from the city and the REC district only for projects they'd like to use that money for. This would be similar to how the county's lodging tax is handled. There's a lodging tax committee that handles where that money goes. It's divvied up to nonprofits. Anybody can apply for it. My proposal was just the city and REC district apply to this committee. They determine where that money goes. In discussions with Councilwoman Schmisher, there was concerns over Ordinance 14. And basically, it's the exact same wording, different paragraphs of the code. And I would just say that we need to rescind the, let me find the, rescind the wording that is in Ordinance 14, which is 3.15.050, and replace it with the same wording that I've suggested in paragraph 3.44.050, to make them read the same. I think that'd take care of any, because both ordinances are basically the same. That's all I have.
I would have to ask Ryan, our attorney, at this late date with a second reading, how do we do that? I don't know if we can, Mike.
Sure.
I don't think, I mean, the voters are voting on the ordinance that you put forth as worded, 14, sorry. And they need to be worded similarly, obviously, because they, one replaces the other. So they're not, it's not a double situation, so it's too late to be changing it now for this.
Why? The ballot language is only for the tax and not where the money goes. Yet the ballot language, I don't think even says, it gives approximate cost, but it doesn't say where the, anything about excess revenues. I think this would, all it would require was a motion to amend?
No, it's not all it requires, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council has regarding the process of amending an ordinance.
Amy?
Thanks. Could you maybe explain to us, like, I understand that 14 and 17 right now read almost exactly the same, and that this, that 14 has passed second reading, so we can't, we cannot do anything with it, at least this evening, because it is not on our agenda. So I think what I hear you say is that, saying is that we can't substantively change 17, but I'd like to understand why. Thanks.
So they're supposed to be mirrors of one another? That's the intent of council? So if you change 17 tonight, I mean, it only becomes effective if the ballot question passes. So I think that's the first question to be answered. And then if there's an issue that needs to be addressed after that, it can be done, but tonight is not the right timing to do that, I guess is my position on that. I guess I don't, you're tilting your head, so I don't really know, like, I'm not, I don't think I'm making myself clear.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand, like, why is, we are considering second reading of Ordinance 17. How would this not be the right time to make sure that Ordinance 17 says what we want it to say? Thanks.
I'm assuming it does actually say what the council wants it to say, because the direction was to have them mirror one another. So I guess I'm not clear on what council wants.
What's the downside? Could you maybe walk us through what the downside is of them not mirroring one another?
Well, they're supposed to, so the fee is only imposed in certain situations, right? And so the tax is imposed in mirroring situations that are different. So they are, they need to mirror each other in case anybody's subject to both the fee and the tax, so that they do not become, they cancel, the person does not become subject to both, and that's why they mirror each other.
Right, but in the disposition of any overage, how would, how does the disposition of overage impact whether or not somebody would become subject to both?
I guess you would want that disposition to be the same in both of them, correct? I don't know, I don't have 14 in front of me, so I don't know what it says about the disposition, so.
It essentially says what the ballot language says, which is that any excess excise funds would go towards capital community amenities. And then we added C, which says first and foremost, the private and commercial boat ramp at the former Clark Station property would be funded.
In the ordinance?
It, yes, that's in the ordinance. So I think what Mr. Storica's proposal is, is it's setting out kind of the parameters of how decisions would be made around any additional potential overage, if it exists.
So I guess it's a budgetary process at the city. It doesn't need to be legislated necessarily, I guess. I guess I'm not, those overages should be decided by the council through their budgetary process, what to do with that money, if it actually, if they actually exist.
Right.
And it sounds like council is trying to potentially consider binding a future council as to what those things should be. I'm not sure I understand what the change in the language is that's being suggested.
Sure. So the change in the language is, as Mr. Storica said, to establish a committee that 50% of any overage would go towards funding a replacement pool, and then that the other 50, per his proposal, then that the other 50% would be, how it is spent would be determined by a committee that is established by council.
I think that's a little concerning, because the budgetary powers and the appropriation of money rests with this body, not with a committee. I think a committee could be created and give you recommendations, but the budgetary authority rests here with this council, under your charter.
Charter.
Yeah, and state law, frankly, so. I mean, ultimately, that budgetary authority can be, in certain circumstances, delegated to a committee, and maybe, I don't have any information on what the county's done, so I don't know what the comparison is there.
Sure.
But you have the budgetary authority per your charter and state law. So we would need to look at that to even see if that's something that you could do under those things, so.
Okay. I mean, I think I, for one, am very interested in having an extremely transparent process where the majority of funds are saved for a replacement pool or for major repairs, so that 50 years down the road, we don't have the same issues that we have right now. I just want to make sure that we do it, you know, legally, that we're following state law and that we're following our charter, and it sounds like maybe research needs to be done to look into that, to see how the county has done that with the Fremont County Tourism Commission. And we would also need to make sure that we are, if it's council's will, I'm only one council member, obviously, but to make sure that 14 and 17 are the same.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I'm going to simplify this in just the way I'm looking at it. Right now, we're looking at the idea of getting the right people involved in this. Do we have the right, if this ordinance and 14's already been approved, later on to adjust the way the money has to be divided up? If we've had more input, more research, we have the right to change that, is that correct?
Yeah, so it has to fall within the confines of the ballot question, right? So that's, on the excess side, that's pretty, I mean, community amenities. That can be more money for the saving up for a future pool. I mean, that covers a lot of things.
So it gives us options.
Yes.
We could pass tonight, it mirrors 14, and later on, either with the new council or further thinking and research, we can define that excess amount to be a little bit more subscripted or whatever, to where people feel more comfortable.
So can we just agree tonight that with the new council coming in, that we will look at that in January?
If, and it may be something
If it passes, yeah.
That if you do, you can do, and you do decide, whether it's a committee or the council does it themselves, it may be something you don't want to put in an ordinance, but something you want to create a policy to kind of guide what those decisions are, you know, some kind of, maybe kind of subjective-objective test as to what, you know, things, what pots things go in. I mean, those are budgetary decisions for the council to weigh, and not in the ordinance itself. It may be something that's better in a policy, that's a little bit more flexible, that can be changed, because this is going to be in place potentially for a really long time, and so you may want something just slightly more flexible, so councils can address as things change throughout the years.
More flexible, but also transparent.
I just want to make sure, there's no reason why we cannot amend Ordinance 14 and Ordinance 17 after the fact. I know Ordinance 14 is based on a taper ballot question. So I just want to make sure I understand about Ordinance 17 before we pass second reading. What are our limitations with regard to future amendments of them?
I think there's two components to both, but 14, I think, is really tied to the ballot question, right? And what the voters are approving. I have concerns about changing anything regarding what the tax applies to, unless the city's going to become more restrictive, meaning it applies to less. You can always become more restrictive. You cannot become less restrictive, right? We talked about that when it was going on. The excess side of things, I think you have more flexibility, because that money is coming to the city for community amenities, which I just mentioned, can be quite a few different things, depending on what council's priorities are. So that part, I'm less concerned about amending moving forward. The actual tax or what the fee is on, I think needs to have careful consideration before anything happens to those sections.
Emily, go ahead.
Clarifying that.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to add another hesitation that I have in addition to hesitations that have been mentioned with the language, and thanks to Mike Storica for thinking through and making some suggestions on this. I do think it's hard to make these changes at this point. And I would also say that, you know, what we're, what we've been working on jointly with the school district and the recreation district for more than two years now, has taken a lot of discussion, a lot of preliminary discussion about what the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement, would look like between the city and the REC district. I would be really hesitant to see language in an ordinance now about designating money for a pool replacement when we don't own the pool and we're not planning to own the pool. So that's just another little footnote I wanted to throw in there that makes me hesitant to make any changes in the ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Emily. Amy, are you, no? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, I would say I have not verified this myself, and so you may have to take this with a grain of salt, but what I believe I have heard the recreation district say is that in the financing for the pool, as presented to the public in this whole process, that they have a capital reserve fund that will be built up over the years for pool replacement. And so perhaps I misheard that. I've certainly not seen the figures, but that's, I believe I've heard Kyle make that statement.
I don't believe it's pool replacement, but major repairs.
Major repairs, not pool replacement, but major repairs. Thank you for that.
Any more discussion of council? None? Then if you would like to make a second, or a motion and a second, or whatever, of the council? Someone like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move on second reading, Title Only, Ordinance 17, Series 2025.
Second.
Made a second. And Emily, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to move or second, so nothing.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Amy?
I think I would request that, based on the outcome of the election tomorrow, that we get a report from our city attorneys as to whether, like, what can we actually do? Take a look at FCTC, see what the county has done with that, to see what our options are, assuming that it is germane after tomorrow? And then have a conversation, I don't know whether that would be best had towards the end of this year or at the beginning of next year, but I think before we decide whether or not it should go into an ordinance or go into a resolution or what, we would also need to talk to the REC district, make sure that we've clearly defined what major repairs are kind of already covered in their capital reserve versus covered by any potential overage, and then just kind of have a more fulsome discussion about how those decisions are going to be made in as transparent a fashion as possible.
Yeah, and like you mentioned, I mean, I think the IGA, if the ballot issue passes, the IGA's probably step one. And then when that language gets sorted, council will have a much better picture about what an excess conversation could look like, so.
I just would want to make sure that it's had, at least, I don't know, by the end of January of next year, at the latest, so that we do have clarity. Thanks.
Yeah, that would be a discussion for the next group of people that will be mayor and council.
I don't think any of us disagree with being transparent and setting this up so it makes sense, but there are some good points that we have to think through before changing an ordinance.
I agree. We're restricted by our charter as well, which the county is not. And so there's a little dynamic difference right there. As you mentioned, there are things that we can do by charter that the county doesn't have to. So I do believe that we should have an organ, a committee? So I do believe that we should have an organ, a committee, I suppose you would say. I think 70 is on wheel, 7 is on wieldly. I'm not at all in favor of an independent financial consultant handling the money. That's inappropriate, I think. I think that we can do that.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, Colorado law's not going to let you.
We're not going to let you do that.
Yeah, do that one.
And we have audits, it's like our 2A, we have audits on it. What we're trying to do is get the, the inherent apparent distrust, apparently, out of this process. So I do believe that a committee would be appropriate. Again, I wouldn't know if 7 is necessary, but it probably would be good. And then have that discussion according to the confines, what we can do according to charter and what our agreements would be with the other half, with, here's the REC District. Okay?
And with that being said, I call the question.
Draw the question.
Call the question.
Oh, call the question, yes. All, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Hemmerich.
Aye.
Anything else for the good of the order? If none, we are adjourned.